All right, thank you everyone. We're about 12 minutes late. We had a budget meeting prior to this meeting. And we ran a little late on it. So anyway. Is there any additions or deletions? Does anyone see anything that they want to add or delete? All right. I entertain a motion for the approval of November 23rd, 2020 minutes.
Having read them over, I'd move we accept them as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Anybody see any? Issues?
I thought they were ordered.
I thought they looked good.
Just before we move on, Mr. Trump, are we going to add propane bids and cemetery?
Want to make that motion?
I can't. I just, are we, if we are gonna add it? Okay, so I'll make the most of under new business, we add the propane contracts and the cemetery. Discussion. And bids.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We did the regular minutes. Road Commissioners Report. Do you have anything?
Uh, just for mild update, we got all the roads graded. With being so warm and stuff, a little bit of moisture, rain we got, we feel the potholes coming back, but I think feel overall the roads, dirt roads are pretty decent shape. We just ordered, actually taking delivery tomorrow for our first two loads of salt. We have approximately 100 ton already in the bin left over from last year. Uh, we've been out twice, two different times with little storms that we had. We haven't really used much material at all in the sand pile or the salt. About it I have on that.
Plus any questions? Anyone have any questions? That's all. You don't have anything else? All right, we want to approve access permits. And there's two here. Timothy Page. On 333 Creek Road. And have you looked that over, Cash?
I have. Um, that's the one on Middle Road?
Yeah.
Correct?
Oh, Creek Road.
Page on Creek Road. Oh, that's his mail address from Wallingford. Okay. The site is actually on Middle Road. Approximately two and a half, two miles north of the town hall. And I did a site visit with him. Uh, there's, I feel there's no culvert required because of the slope off Middle Road. My suggestion is that we approve the driveway access. He's actually just south of the Ketchum Fire Pond.
So that'd be?
That lot that was for sale?
Yeah, lots for sale. Um, Mark.
Mark sold it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mark Grayson?
Yep, Grayson, yep.
Just north of his big farmhouse.
So the applicant is Matthew Dootco, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Just north of the Ketchum Farm.
And the address of Creek Road is his primary residence at that, this time.
Make a motion, we approve.
There's been a motion made, seconded by Rick. Any further discussion?
Cash, just to picture that in my mind, there enough slope there so that it's not gonna bother?
It's not gonna bother and?
The driveway or the road?
Driveway or road because it drops off. And actually had a conversation with him today. I'd made a suggestion off, should I say, not wearing a town hat of if he so he don't bottleneck water up off away from our right away anyways.
Yeah.
To possibly look at putting a culvert in while they're building the road and he suggests he said today his contractor suggested that anyways.
Okay.
So it'd actually help us even more.
All right, there's been a motion made. Seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
This second driveway permit was from Bump Road?
Yeah. You have to make a motion for the select board chair to sign this?
I'll move.
Is there a motion made?
I'm gonna get motion.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'll sign that minute. Uh, the next one is Timothy Page. That's?
Just did hit.
Huh?
Timothy Page?
No. I misstated. That's why I brought the other name back up. And this is on Bump Road.
This location on Bump Road is up on the top of the hill of Steep Park, just to go start across the flats. I guess what my understanding is there's two houses gonna be built there. And there we go, get a, do a site visit with the owner. And don't see any need for any culvert because of the setback in the way the slope land is away from the road. And send those big meadows just past that big white house that sits on the hill on the south side of Bump Road.
Is that, is that far enough to the east or it's not gonna create a problem of a blind spot coming over the top of that hill?
Yeah, I had that conversation with him about that too. Yeah. Yeah, it just barely is a slight, and actually he's gonna have the contractor. I guess there, while there's some brush there, he's gonna have the contractor remove the brush for better site vision.
Okay.
Motion to approve with the select board chair's signature?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? 2024 F-50 by 50 warranty?
We have a, the Ford through the dealership, we could actually do a studded warranty if required. Katie can relate this a little bit with Lee Porter, the salesperson.
So that sheet right there is what the dealership gave us for their warranty options. Lee Porter recommends only going with a Ford warranty. And so you can choose the amount of years and miles and then the pricing that goes with that. So I think it's on there, how much each thing is.
Roughly the warranty with a hundred dollar deductible on each one, the seven year one is $5,340. And then the 72 month six years is 47, 80.
So I guess I just need clarification because I thought when we authorized the purchase of the truck, we said buy the maximum warranty at that time. So I just wonder why it's coming down now.
Was that the minutes that we actually?
I thought that was the case. Maybe I misunderstood.
I think that was for the MAC.
That was for the MAC and not for this one? Well, so let me put it back, let me, let me backtrack here. You guys approved this one the night that I wasn't here. So I don't know what you did the night I wasn't here. Because the night I, I was out for some reason, the night you approved the little truck. So I'm not sure. But, so what's, what's it got on it right now? Just a standard three or 36,000 bumper to bumper?
Yes.
Yeah. So?
What are you suggesting? What do you?
I'm a, I'm a believer in warranties. I mean, I would buy all you can buy because typically you save in the process. You save, I mean, that.
Especially with the, uh, the emissions and stuff we have going on with these trucks today.
With the corrosive nature of the salt that you're using in it, I mean, just all the different things you're putting through it, I think.
$5,300.
Is there, I mean, ultimately that comes out of the equipment fund. So the money's, the, that's part of the purchase. So there's enough money there to make that purchase because it's ultimately a part of the truck purchase.
What do we have there, Heidi?
I was working on budget still.
The warranty ultimately comes out of the equipment fund because it's part of the truck purchase. Does the equipment fund have enough money to sustain the 5340 warranty purchase?
The equipment fund before this year's transfer happens has $40,000 in it.
So I'll make a motion to buy the maximum warranty for $5,340 out of the equipment fund as a part of the F-550 purchase.
Second.
What was the dollar now?
5,340.
I'm not sure. I, I feel like it's 5,600 now. Because it goes up as the, like, so we bought in September and the price goes up every month that goes by.
But doesn't it have an insert, in-service date?
Part of it. I think it's, uh, let me go back. I think it might be a difference of like $300. I mean, the truck that we just finished bui, well, we haven't finished buying yet.
You're talking 5,600?
Yeah, part of it.
And 40?
So I'll amend my motion to include if it up to $600 more, if it's, if it's three or $600 more than what that price is quoted, I'll?
Yeah, I think it, because that was like when we were first looking at the truck, the pricing there. She's just gonna say up to 6,000 or?
Actually in service date.
Yeah, so I'll amend my motion to be, I guess, just say up to $6,000 because ultimately if there's any window in it.
I'll continue to second that.
Now, is this guarantee all with Ford or is it gonna be like with the Western style transmissions, this one?
Yeah, this Ford. That's strictly this fellow right there, you gotta.
Okay, strictly Ford.
Any other questions?
They don't farm it out.
And now being strictly Ford, can the service work be done locally here or does it have to go?
It can be done at a Ford, at a Ford garage. Which we're gonna be limited because Stewarts are done near the month.
Yeah, okay.
But Claremont's taking them over, right?
Claremont's taking them over.
Which is where we bought it, right?
Yes. But the thing is that won't be a Ford garage down here.
They won't be doing Ford work out of this garage?
Nope.
Are you totally going out of business?
That's, that was my understanding. And my understanding was the mechanics were offered if they wanted to continue to run out of the garage or?
So they're still gonna sell vehicles over here, but they're not gonna do any mechanic work?
I don't think they're gonna sell vehicles out of here. I'm not sure. That was my impression, but.
Been there a long time.
I would ask that we move the motion.
All right, uh, hearing no other objection, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, approval of select board warrants, they're floating and drifting wherever they are. Do we have any guests tonight? Hey, what's happening? You're doodin' this. All right, um, any public comments? Getting there. Old Business, Dan Pinkowski, Coal River Brem Removal Project Costs. He called me on that.
He's, Dan's here on the.
Oh, yeah.
Dan, you can hear you, Dan, if you want to talk and make sure everything's working.
Sure, can you hear it?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great, great.
So?
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Danny called me and he's concerned about the costs that may be incurred for what might be considered a public water system. So having said that, do you want to speak to your concerns, Dan?
Sure, um, yeah, basically. Yes, let me, I can, I may, let me back up because, uh, now we made out a grant. We, any say or control or the select board have any, or the county Clarendon, now that you made out the grant on how it gets spent or any suggestions that are made toward where the money goes to get spent? Or is that in the Nancy's corner at the Rutland County Conservation District?
To, to my understanding, it would be, it's out of our hands at this point. It was submitted and awarded and they are the managers of it. So as far as I know, we have no more say over it once it's been awarded and it's in their hands.
Okay, okay. So I guess any, anything basically that I, my concerns or any of the towns, local townspeople's concerns would basically be a mute point that?
As far, I mean, to my knowledge, I, I guess it would be a question for Nancy, but to my knowledge, it's, it really is out of our hands. Because I think we had to, we put on the ballot that year, which is now like two or three years ago now, the $10,000 and basically that was our required portion, like we, we handed it over to them and, and now it's 100% like the ball's in their court.
Right, right. Okay. No, that was, um, well, I was just concerned about, uh, with all these extras engineering, I think I, if, and I'm just gonna throw out some numbers though. I don't know what they are, where they are, and I don't, I believe two meetings ago, um, I don't even think, I think Nancy was asked sort of where it was at. And I don't believe she even knew where it was at at that point. But I believe we got awarded maybe 100 to 120K, somewhere in that range. I think I heard from Mike Padone that he thought there was maybe 75 to 80K left.
And, and that would be news to us. We have not been given any numbers.
Yeah, yeah. So those are sort of, of, uh, numbers that, uh, Mike happened to mention on a conversation earlier tonight. Um, that's what he thought was left, uh, by the time we bought the, or, uh, bought the easements and, uh, I believe, I'm gonna say the, I'm gonna assume the engineering for this community water system came out of that. I guess just some of my concerns where it's, uh, it sort of went to a community water system and, uh, really nobody knows where the original water system is, even the owners apparently. Because we've heard a couple different areas and, uh, and then I think I heard on the two meetings ago when I was, um, down at the town hall, um, at that select board meeting, that there was a concern about lead pipes and things of that sort. Also, uh, that were feeding the water system. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure on that, but that seems like that would be a landlord's, uh, responsibility.
Yeah, I think around the conversation around the piping and stuff like this, that was just brought up. Nobody really knows that and I've been, um, hoping that before snowfalls that we can try and at least find, uh, where the piping goes to that spring from, uh, that's your father's house there?
Right.
Yeah. And so, uh, because of what's been going on, everybody can't, you know, get together, make a solid day to get there to check it out, but we want to do that, so.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. Uh, now is it, Mike, uh, I just had a general question. Is it a plastic that goes down? Or it's coming from that spring or is it, uh, those days it would, it would be metal? My understanding.
I know the piping come out of the house, the farmhouse, you know, sellers all, um, black iron or?
Iron pipe. I believe that it's probably iron.
Probably iron, more likely.
So I'm, I'm sure, uh, like Dick Safe has instruments that just detect, you know, it's not that far below the grade. And follow that line out and see where it really does go. If it is, because ours were all black iron down here from years ago that, um, went under the road and everything. So, uh, um, that should be very traceable.
Sure. Well, I think, I think the reality is though, you know, going forward, a lot of it is questions and maybe in my mind, we give it probably till the new year and then you ask for another update from Nancy. I think that's kind of, you know, since the ball's very much in their court, you know? Um, and maybe she can give more details at that time of where things stand, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, I guess, I guess I ha, I, I guess I can see why the state is in the, and state projects are in the disarray that they usually are in. Because we have people running budgets and that really, we don't even know where this is, what's gonna be left out of this, um, grant. Once all the parts and pieces. My understanding of being a project manager would be you would have an idea right in the front end when you do your proposal on what the pro, basically the, um, the summary of costs are gonna be and what you typically would have, uh, have left. But, uh, and usually you would come up with little, um, maybe, uh, preferences like Mike mentioned, uh, with his skills to find, uh, where the original well really does happen to, um, be placed and also, um, well, the question I just asked, uh, iron pipe. Well, why couldn't Dick Safe find out? Go down and run a lot, you know, detect it and run a line to where it really is and see if it is even going down into that flood plain or if it's in another area above the flood plain.
I think they're, um, they tried to work with an engineer and so far I think that the only results the engineers come back with is the amount of water, if they build a new well, the amount of water that has to be added at new well to, to work those two or three houses, it's three houses, right? Three houses.
Well, you can do that from your desk because it's, uh, it's basically just a formula.
Yeah.
Uh, on a basic formula. It's no different than doing septic. If you do it on, it's based on, you know, septic's based on bedrooms, you can do it from your, uh, computer system and run it through, uh, or just a simple calculator with calculations. But, um, um, no, I just was, uh, you know, I just wondered why we didn't put more effort into finding the original well rather than it getting snowballing to this, uh, to this point, um, on the whole thing.
I think, uh, Danny, you know, to, to move this topic along, subject along, I think one of the things that we can give them a shout out tomorrow to see that if we could have them get to dig safe, but I certainly have no problem meeting up there with Cash and see if I can divine it with the instrument that I have.
Sure, sure. And that was great, just to keep the, uh, you know, general cost down.
Yeah.
On the whole thing because it just seems like it's gonna snowball. I can tell you, you aren't gonna drill, drill one well and get 20 to 30 gallons a minute. It ain't gonna happen.
No.
We've six, six or eight around here and you're, you're gonna be drilling probably four wells to get the quantity and volume that you are gonna need, yeah. And typically it's anywhere from seven to eight thousand a well. That's not even without the storage system tank.
Well, we'll follow up on this Danny and I'll get back to you, all right?
No problem. That's, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to, uh, view my concerns on it and, uh, but apparently like Robbie said, it's, we did the grant, we got the, um, we got the money and we're sort of, any of the budgets are out of our, or actually what's being done is, is out of our control or the select board's control.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can check on that, but that's, that's certainly my understanding of things.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. That's just, uh, um, and like I said, it's just unfortunate that it, uh, gets handled, you know, things get handled this way, but, uh, but that's just my basic concern on the whole thing. I, I just can see it. A lot of things being done and, uh, um, the ultimate goal is gonna get basically half baked in the end.
Yeah.
And, uh, and we have no, I, we obviously have no control over that, but, uh, but that's about all I had to, uh, expel is, uh, concerns.
All right, well, in closing, thank you for your concerns, but we'll, you know, see if we can't run down something before the end of the week here.
Oh, no problem. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll see you then.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, good evening. Thank you very much.
You too.
You too. Okay, old business propane. I have it under old business.
New business.
New business.
I have it under old business.
Don't be optimistic.
Uh, so in one of those envelopes that was in your folder, there's, um, four different proposals for propane for town garage and transfer station.
Here it is.
Who are the four companies, Katie?
Keizer, Irving, Suburban and, um, Lake Champlain Coal.
Right here.
Four envelopes.
Four envelopes there.
No, 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 no.
These are cemeteries.
I put all of them in one envelope because it's just emails printed out.
Oh, okay. She said four, five dollars, four envelopes.
So did I.
A couple of the companies sent me like a formal contract if you want to sign it tonight. The other ones are just in an email what their pricing would be. And then they can send me a contract.
And it's gonna also require probably all the tanks to be changed out if we change?
Yes. Um, but the current provider was the lowest, so.
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
Okay. Are they offering a pre-buy or are they just offering a locked in price?
I think locked in price.
There we have, uh,
Well, based on Katie's report, I'll make short order of this. I'd make a motion that we go with the current provider that is the lowest price.
Yeah.
Which is Keizer.
It's Keizer, right?
Sounds like it, man. For discussion.
How many gallons do we buy and how much do they got? What do they charge you?
Uh, we estimate about 2,000 gallons.
45.
Yeah, that is the lowest price. All right, so there's been a motion made, seconded, uh, by Rick, rate of $1.45, uh, .459.
And it's not a pre-buy, right? It's just a locked in price?
That's what it says.
Because if it's a pre-buy, we gotta cut a lump check and all that?
No, I don't think it's that.
Okay.
Okay, motion made, seconded. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? There you go Katie.
So I will email them back and ask for like a contract.
Right. I'm not gonna put this all in one thing. Alright, in the cemetery, we had a, an issue with a tree.
Um, are we going back to the top then for the Smith Pratt button?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, a lady came in, um, probably last week or the week before and her mother was recently buried in that cemetery and there's a tree, like tree limbs overhanging it and it's a brand new stone that she doesn't wanna get mossy, obviously. So she asked that they would be removed and I told her I would let the select board know about the complaint and see if they could do anything.
If, uh, Cash, I met you up there and I bought my trim sticks where you could do it all from the ground.
See what we can do on, from the ground.
Yeah. Because just looking at that, I haven't.
Saw the pictures.
Yeah, I just, I have enough equipment.
We have the, uh, limb saw. We actually could, get limb saw over there.
Clean it up. So.
Yep.
We'll figure out a time and then meet up there.
Yep.
Preferably before there's two foot of snow.
Could be shortly.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing.
I can let her know that.
Yeah.
It will be taken care of.
Yeah, we'll.
We'll work on it, yep.
Alright, uh, E-cycle contract.
Folder. It has to be renewed by the first.
Okay, wait a minute.
Is it with, uh, is that Good Point?
It's like N E C R, New England. I think it's.
Out of Burlington?
Oh, they're the ones that have been doing it for quite a few years.
Yeah, we did this last year.
I think there's, there's nobody else, truthfully. You don't really, you don't really have a choice. So is it all of us or just the chairman?
Um. No, just by the chairman.
Just the chairman?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Who seconded that, Robert?
I seconded it, yep.
Alright, email the, the terminal building over at the airport.
What, what exactly are they looking for? I've been following the emails, but are they looking for us to just say, yeah, go for it or what?
They want us to name it?
Well, no, they've already had hearings and they've got a suggested name, but I just don't understand what we need to do.
It's in a public comment period, I believe, until the seventeen.
So I'll make a motion that the select board not make a comment.
Uh.
Let the process run.
All factor.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is what it is.
But when I was at the meeting here the other, other day and I had Katie come along so that there's two folks hearing what they're saying. The whole tack group that's over there are deadly against this because this individual, while he was born in Rutland, he spent most of his life over in, uh, West Bridgewater and Woodstock, yep, and, and more importantly, that building has, had been dedicated to the person that helped upgrade it. And there's a plaque and that was, uh, uh, what's her name? Madeline Cunin.
Madeline Cunin.
Oh, so it's technically already dedicated, they're trying to rededicate it?
Yeah.
So who's, who's the individual they're trying to name it after?
Houghton or Hooton.
It's in your folder.
Is it Walter Hooton? Which folder?
Um, the select board folder, not the budget meeting folder.
Walter Houghton?
You would think so. Who, who's?
I think they were looking to have the select board support in saying that they agree to not rename it.
Right here.
Oh, I see. Keep it as it is?
Yes.
That's the idea?
And that's basically what it is. Vermont Transportation Board on December seventeenth, twenty twenty, beginning at three P M, will conduct a public hearing on a petition to name the terminal building at the Rutland State Vermont Airport, the Walter E. Houghton Memorial Terminal. The hearing will be conducted remotely, uh, the hearing will be run by, uh, pursuant to nineteen V S A and the, going on and on. Uh, Mr. Hou- Houghton was born in Rutland and raised in Bridgewater. He earned his private pilot license while serving in the U S Air Force and following his service worked for Mohawk Airlines. In nineteen seventy, he worked for the Vermont Aeronautics Board as manager of state airports and eventually managed Northern Airways' based operation in Burlington, Vermont. Nineteen eighty-three, Mr. Houghton was selected as a director of the aviation at Burlington International Airport where he helped promote the growth of its passenger airline service. During his time working for the state, he played an important role in implementing the state airport plan, leading search and rescue operations, engaging ac- in accidental pre-planning and implementing both an effective winter snow removal plan and continuing maintenance.
South Burlington.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what did he actually do for the Rutland one?
Nothing. Except he was in charge, he was born here.
Yeah.
He was in charge of the aeronautics in the state.
Mm-hmm. I, I personally support Robert's motion.
Same here. I mean, the only other motion I would make is that we draft a letter and send it that says we believe that what the airport committee recommends is what should happen.
Good enough.
Uh, that's, that's.
I, I mean, I'm fine with that, but I just, I don't see why we need to get involved.
You wanna make that a motion? Rescind your other motion.
Gotta rescind the other, cause that was made and seconded, right?
Yeah.
It's technically been made and seconded. I'm not gonna rescind it. I've got a motion that I've made and I think was seconded to just not do anything. So let's see where that goes.
Well, they were, the airport was hoping that
We'd support.
We would support not.
Going with Mr. Houghton.
Or the opposition.
Because it is in the town of Clarendon.
I'd rather not leave that dog fight.
Yeah, why does, like, where do I even get involved in that?
Exactly.
Well, because it's in the town.
Prededicated anyway.
It's.
You never know what the fallout of this type of thing is from the state level if you take the wrong person off. You're almost better to stay out of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And just not.
Well, I had Brian Collamore call me.
I'm in office, no comment.
Did you see some of those emails I sent him? Uh, Katie used, I s- I know I sent them to you.
Yep, I saw, um.
Brian Collamore is hoping that we would back this.
Dave Potter.
Dave Potter, while he's still in office, is hoping he would back this. Uh, Art Peterson got ahold of me and he's concerned as well. He, he's following up, trying to get some more information.
With support that we support changing the name?
No, that we do not support changing the name.
Already got political, so.
Yeah.
That tells you how deeply political it is.
Right. But I mean, Collamore was looking for support from us, the town. Um.
Leave B.
Hmm?
To leave a B.
Yeah, to.
It's already been dedicated to stopping basically named.
But we, they were hoping that we would, um.
Do you think there's gonna be a lot of public support for this? I mean, it's in the public comment period now. There's gotta be a lot of support for this guy.
Yeah, but from no place down here, all up north, all in, in Mount Puyallure. You gotta understand the politics, Art.
I mean, you could technically use his name to name every one of these state airports.
So I'll rescind my motion and I'll amend it to say that we can send a letter basically endorsing the recommendation of the airport committee.
Do it.
That's as far as I'm willing to go.
Alright.
I like that better.
Anybody wanna second it?
I'll second it. I may have, I don't know. I don't know who originally did it.
Um, who seconded Robert's original motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was Bob.
Bob. But he's rescinding that.
And he's changing.
Well, I'll second the new one.
Okay, later, yeah.
I'll stay out of it.
And.
Now we got this straight.
Katie, you have a sense of what we want to send for a letter?
Hmm.
Um, you know, you were part of a conversation, uh, so I think that, you know.
Same as the next discussion we're gonna do.
Yeah.
So, did you all approve that?
Yeah, you got it going on.
I know I didn't. I just was thinking about it, Art. Starting to get hungry.
Good job, Bob.
Alright, motion, rescinded, motion made. Hold on, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? School choice discussion. That in here too?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, as I am an administrator of a national school choice supporting school, I will recuse myself from this discussion.
Alright, dear chairman, we are respectfully requesting that you consider joining city and county leaders across the county in officially recognizing January twenty-four through thirty, twenty twenty-one as School Choice Week in Clarendon. Issuing a proclamation provides an opportunity to shine a positive spotlight on K twelve education options available for children and families in Clarendon. Last year, more than five hundred and fifty mayors and county leaders, along with twenty-seven governors, the unanimous United States Senate and the president issued proclamations recognizing National School Choice Week. National School Choice Week is entirely non-political, you're right, and non-partisan. And we do not advocate for or against any legislation. Our goal is to simply uri- raise, excuse me, awareness among parents of public and non-public K twelve education options available to their children. Please let me know if you will be able to issue this proclamation and help us raise awareness of the importance of opportunity in education. I greatly appreciate your consideration. We have provided both a Word and PDF proclamation template on our website. Goes on to say what the pro- proclamation is. Do you, does the public want me to read this?
Hearing no. But I can voice, you wanna, I can voice something that may sway you guys' opinion.
Okay.
First of all, whether I'm for it or against it isn't important. The last time you guys made a proclamation without getting the public's opinion, you caught hell for it, which was the gun situation. So, if you, you can make this proclamation if you want to. Like I said, I'm not saying whether I'm for it or against it. I'm just saying, think about it. It isn't a do anything anyway. If you may have every teacher in, in town of Clarendon here next select board meeting, if you do.
Via Zoom. Clarendon School Choice Week, whereas all children in Clarendon should have access to the highest quality education possible and whereas Clarendon recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Clarendon to be successful adults and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Clarendon and whereas Clarendon is home to multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children in addition to the families who educate their children. Whereas, edu- it's only a couple more whereas. Whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community and whereas Clarendon has many high-quality teacher professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective education options. Now, therefore, I, Michael Clopson, do hereby recognize January twenty-four through the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one as Clarendon School Choice Week and I call this ob- observance to the attention of all our citizens. So, to me.
You can take a poll of who's here. I said, go for it, inside.
But my thing is, on our reply on this, is that actually grade our school system, local school system, that yes, they're doing a, we got super education or we don't have super education?
What it's doing is it's basically just making an awareness that families have the option to put their kids in public school or the families have an option to put their kids in private school, but they have that option.
They have that option already.
It's.
Right, it's just bringing awareness to it.
So I know I'm recused, but I, I'll just give you, just because I, we are a national, we, we participate in this at the Christian school.
Okay.
The reality is, is this is a group that is out there calling for equality in education. In other words, if somebody was sitting in our audience and wanted their child to go to a private school, whether it, any type of private school, religious, public, any of them, it's calling attention to the fact that there ultimately is not equality right now. Right now, your tax dollars do not go where you want your child necessarily to go.
Right.
And this group is advocating for true school choice in our country. That's what they're advocating for. They're not, they're, and again, it says it's non-political. It re- it really isn't. They're, they're not, they're not advocating or telling you one political party's better than the other. They are simply advocating and saying, your tax dollars, if you want your child to go to that school, you should have the choice to do that. That's all it's saying.
Um, but then the taxpayers would put the bill for that, right?
Well, you pay an education tax. In other words, your education, the, 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 the
So.
Advocacy is that your education taxes that you pay should go wherever you want your student to go.
To a private sector or a different.
Whether it's private or public. There should, it's an advocacy for true school choice. That's, that's the, because right now.
I have no problem with that.
Right now, truly, there is not true school choice. If you go to, you send your kid to me, you send your kid to Christ the King.
Long trail.
You are going to, if it's a non pol- if it's a non publicly funded school, you're gonna pay double. You're gonna pay twice. You're gonna pay your property taxes to your town. You're also gonna pay your tuition to the private school. This is advocating saying we should have true school choice.
Of where my tax dollars are gonna go for education.
Correct.
My kids, okay.
Further, I, since I don't have any children in school, in the school, my tax dollars that I, that go to education, I should be allowed to pick what school it goes to.
There you go.
So that's the, that's the thrust of it. And again.
It's the right to have the choice.
Just to make sure that you understand what it is. That's, that's what it is. And I again, will back out of the conversation, cause I am recused from this conversation.
I make a motion, we support it. I'll second that for discussion.
Is there any further discussion?
My, my only question would be, and I agree with it, but at what point do you say, where does this stop, you know, your school choice? What is the district that it contains? You know, is it, uh, Rutland County or is it gonna include Addison County, Bennington County?
I think it's national, isn't it?
Is it national, you know, do we wind up sending a kid to, I'll say Albany, New York?
That's what you wanna do?
Yeah, no, that, that.
Yeah, choice is a choice. No different.
That's the only question and, uh.
The kids going on white line.
If we're, we're only gonna pay that same portion, I have no problem with it. But if we're gonna pay extra to send them, to ship them down there, to board them down there or something, then it's a little, little different story.
I don't, I don't know that you'd be, would you be paying for them to be transported and live down there or just go to school there?
You know, if it's, uh, if my tax, we'll just use the figure of two thousand dollars of my property taxes goes for the school and that's included. and that's included, then it's fine. But if my tax is gonna pay more to ship them somewhere else, then that's a little difference.
State.
Then. Well.
That's a good point, really.
But other, otherwise, I don't have a big problem with it. It, it's more a question than a problem, because I just don't know the answer.
Well, Cash, you made a motion then.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think a lot.
I second it.
You seconded it.
So, and of course, for the record, Robbie is recusing himself. So, all those in favor of the motion to support this, say aye.
Aye. I'll say aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? All right. I can't wait till the next meeting.
Let the bums first.
So I think, I don't need you to sign that, I can just print it off and send it in because it already says.
Yep, because there's no.
I support school choice, simple as that. I don't have a kid in the school either.
I support it too.
Yeah.
I, I do, I, I think.
People should have their choice.
I love for my tax dollars instead of going to the school where the kids come out of there not as smart as I'd like them to be. I'd like to be able to say my tax dollars should go to a different school.
I agree with that.
All right.
When I was in school, I had that experience because I was, my family ended up pulling the sisters and I, brother, into a private school. And I wish, looking back, that we stayed at that private school. This would open a, a venue for those kids that, I wish I had that.
Well, I, I think there's a lot of low-income families that can't afford to send their kids to a, a better private school that would like to.
Well, that's where Adam goes there and it costs eighteen to nineteen thousand dollars right now to have him sit on my couch on a Zoom.
Well, Mike.
But I'm not gonna, long trail.
They're, they're partially publicly funded though, right, Mike? Isn't there a partial?
Yeah, I'm not sure how all that works, Liz was the.
Yeah. We don't need to get sidetracked.
Okay. Uh. Our last thing on the new business is the transfer station light. Have you contacted?
Talked to Dave and waiting to hear from, uh, the fellow. And actually, I'll do a follow-up call by the end of the week if he doesn't get ahold of me.
Okay.
And just to, you were actually over there getting, picking up culverts at six fifteen this morning, it's still dark. They seem to be okay with lighting over there. Yes, it is dim. I would suggest replacing, if anything, that light right by the, the compact itself.
That's what they wanna do.
That one light?
Yep.
As far as putting the light over there way over by the transformer, I don't think it'd do it justice, I, it'd be a waste of money.
And it, that's like between eighteen and twenty-five dollars a month. For G M P to put that light up there.
Waste money because it's way over there left field.
Right, and it won't show.
It's not even worth doing.
Yeah. So you're still following up on that? Because Tom brings it up every once in a while.
Yep. And, and like I said, that, the light, I think if that was a, a light like we have here in the town hall inside here, not the brown light, it'd be different.
See, what?
It'd be brighter.
When we built all that, those were C V lights that they were throwing out.
Right.
And so they were, any employee that wanted them could have them.
Right.
So.
They served justice for the time they were there.
So you're gonna follow up on that. Tom wants it lowered a little bit so that he can, it, it's, then it'll shine underneath that building that we built.
If that case, put a little light there.
Get some L E D shop lights from.
Shop light, L E D, that's what should be underneath that little building.
Yeah.
It's got the dead-looking chicken, the skeleton hanging on it.
Well, let's, yeah, well, let's get that, that's something Harry put there, but I don't wanna. But anyway, uh, we wanna change that one out.
Yep.
Let's work on that and then.
That, that sounds to me like that's an emergency management purchase, since we're gonna alleviate an emergency.
Where's Matt?
And Matt likes to.
On emergency management thing, but.
Matt likes to shop at Harbor Freight, so you can go over and pick up a couple L E D lights for us, can't you?
Put a solar one up, save money, right?
Right.
Support Green Mom Power.
Well, there you go, there you go.
I have no comment.
Look at you, you're, you're going crazy on us tonight.
Okay, uh.
That, what's his last name?
Jacob Albaugh.
Uh, Heidi, after you get done sneezing, do you have anything?
Wait, are you gonna do?
We gotta do cemetery beds, you haven't opened those yet.
Oh, for Christ sakes. It's football night in America.
Done the third inning, are you football? Is that what they do, ending, innings?
Yeah, you open that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, quarters.
Bob, you open that one.
How many laps they do?
Open this one. I don't wanna knock it into Bob's water.
You can't open anything, slide one this way. Fast flipper.
Yep.
They're hoping this.
I just hope it ain't the forty-year-old woman that's there.
So what's a, for the record, what's our four companies?
I got Martell.
Martell.
Interesting, interest.
Intrinsic.
Intrinsic, okay.
Thank you.
I have Johnson's refusal.
Refuse, which that's the one we've got now, right?
That's what we have now.
Okay.
Capetan, Costin, Costin's.
Capetan, Costin.
Um, Johnson comes in for total cost of five cemeteries of ten thousand nine hundred dollars.
Ten thousand nine?
Okay, that's one.
Martell is fourteen thousand.
Fourteen three from Martell.
Yep.
Capetan and Costin is, uh, two, four, five moans, six moans. At a total of ten seven, ten thousand seven hundred.
Six moans, you said?
And this.
Bob, when you say moans, because I have different estimated number of moans, I have.
Estimated number of moans, I'm sorry.
I have twenty estimated on mine, ten nine.
I have twenty as well.
Yeah, twenty here, uh, I'm sorry, I just counted the number of cemeteries, I'm sorry.
And, uh, mine is total cost is seven thousand three hundred. Additional trimming, maintenance per hour, in other words, side work, uh, is fifty dollars an hour. And that's an intracycle or whatever.
Yeah, this one, this one is forty-five dollars an hour.
The one I have at ten thousand nine hundred is thirty dollars an hour.
And that's the guy that's doing it right now?
The one doing it now.
What's the boards?
I personally, I weigh in a little bit, I, the Johnson that's doing it this time, um, I seen him actually do extra trimming, especially around town hall that hasn't been done, um, not even being asked. I did notice that they did do extra work already at the Hippin' Oak Cemetery this last week. I don't know if you guys been up there.
Oh, they were in there last week?
Uh, yeah, I see some work been done because I've been.
Which, which border, Cash?
Um, along McCullough's machinery shop there.
To the east?
To the east, yes.
Where the machinery's parked in the sheds there?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they've done some work there. At least they made some progress.
Good.
And like I said, that bid was ten thousand nine hundred with the thirty dollar per hour extra.
I think they've done a great job.
Yeah, Johnson's has been very good communicating with me.
I entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, we keep the gentleman that we had from last year.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of them favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Katie, let them know and, uh, also let the other folks know that we.
Thank you very much.
I'm just gonna go on the record that I recuse because one of those is my cousin, so.
Do we wanna have any more discussion on this concrete thing?
Well, you've got a, you've got an estimate there right now, uh.
For just the footing, right?
I think, I think, well, you're going much farther, you're gonna have a, some kind of a thought of what's the rest of the cost.
All right, let's.
Put it away for the.
Handle it till next week, or next meeting maybe, we'll know more.
We'll have some more discussion, we gotta do a little bit more investigating before we go any further.
It's another year for the devil.
Yeah. Uh, Cash, you have any concerns?
I'm awesome, thank you.
Bob?
No, just, uh, bring you up to date a little bit, uh, solid waste meeting last Wednesday, two hours on the phone. What a waste. It, uh, it wound up their pastor budget for the coming year, costs are gonna increase a little bit, uh.
Okay.
They're going to, uh, looking at buying some equipment truck. Outside that, they're just going on with the food waste thing and going, that's about it.
All right, Katie, are you sure you don't have anything else?
Oh, I do. Um, I've been working on the hazard mitigation planning team, um, getting it together. And I received notes from Alfstrom Wilson, John Colvin, and Art Menard to not be on the committee. So currently, we have Cash, myself, and Matt for sure, and Bronson's still iffy. Um, so the question was, do we want to find alternatives or do we wanna just keep the committee small? And I know if Matt's still on there, he had an opinion.
What's your opinion, Matt?
Well, you should look at the threshold, the threshold, and there has a mitigation plan, they have the fire chief, they have the town administrative person on it, they had the road commissioner on it, and they had like the wastewater guy on it or whatever, I mean, so you don't need a whole slew of people on it. I think you could, you know, four or five people maximum, I would say, you don't need a whole slew of people, so.
So if Bronson comes on, you've got four, right?
And I, I recommend maybe Dave Seward.
Can you contact him?
Doesn't have anything, any connection to anything, just a, just a citizen.
So, I'll make a motion that, um, you ask Dave Seward and if you, and, and finalize it and basically get started. That's, if, if he says, if he says no, go with it as it is.
Okay.
Second.
Good idea.
Dave's a good man.
Uh, Cash, I noticed that you called to water.
Is it dead?
Killed the chairman.
Bill, you get that?
Well, I thought that was a gavel.
Hopefully that bug's dead.
All right, I don't have anything, Rick, do you have anything?
I have.
I don't think you all voted on that motion.
We didn't vote.
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, there wasn't, is there a motion?
You motioned.
Yes, motion made and seconded.
You called Dave Seward.
Football, huh?
You rip about football, baseball.
All right, there's a motion made, uh, to try and contact Dave Seward, seconded. Uh, any other conversation around that motion? Hearing none, all of them favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I'm not even gonna ask, do you have anything else, Katie?
Nope.
Rick? I entertain a motion.
Tell them.
All of them favor?
Aye, good night.
Hey, hey, anyone opposed?